Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr.
Present.
Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco.
Present.
Councilmember Jose Ponce.
Present.
Councilmember Matias Rosales.
Present.
Councilmember Gloria Torres.
Present.
Vice Mayor Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Present.
Mayor Gerardo Sanchez.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. This is a work session, so we're going to go ahead and go with the items for discussion only. We're going to go with item number 2A, Discussion on Possible Direction Staffing in All Matters Regarding the Contract with Yuma Community Food Bank for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021. Tadeo, Francia?
Francia.
Good evening. Let me just get my notes. Alright, so for the Yuma Community Food Bank, this year it's a total of $25,000. This is going to go to serving and providing food for our low-income families here in San Luis, free of charge. There has been no change to the contract.
Very good.
And we have the representative present in case you have any questions.
Thank you, Tadeo.
I would like to hear from the representative from Food Bank. They're always doing good things, and we are very appreciative of everything you do for the city assemblies. So, who's on behalf of Food Bank?
Sarah.
First, council.
Hello. How are we doing?
You know, it's been a rough four months, but it's not just us. I think everybody feels that same sense of pressure to find out what the new normal is, and the Food Bank was no different. I am happy to say that we did not close. We did not have anybody go home sick. We've got a great team here that likes to support their community, and we're here. We're here. We've got some food that came in from the USDA early on. We had about three weeks where we weren't sure if we were going to have enough food to serve everybody, because, you know, the disruption of the supply chain was the bigger issue that we faced. But with the USDA programs, they actually shored up a lot of our concerns. So rest assured, we have food, and we have a good staff. We've got some new equipment so that we don't have to worry about trucks breaking down or reefers not staying to temp.
That's great news. Thank you, and I really appreciate what you do for our community. It's amazing. And yes, it is hard times, and I know there's a lot more unemployment, a lot more uncertainty in our community here in Yuma County. And I just want to congratulate you, congratulate your staff for everything you do for, not only for the city assemblies, but also Yuma County. And on behalf of council, on behalf of myself, I'd like to personally thank you, and it just gives me great pleasure to be able to support the community Food Bank.
I will definitely pass on your well wishes to my staff, because it wouldn't happen without them.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the floor to council members. Let's see here. Councilman, Vice Mayor, any questions, concerns?
No, Mayor. Just, I just wanted to say hello to Sarah. How are you doing?
Very well. I was so sorry. I was hopeful that maybe this would have been a different outcome, but anyway, I'm not a voter in San Luis, but I'm a supporter of yours.
It's okay. We don't get official numbers till Friday. I'm still hopeful.
Okay, that's good news. I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you for what you do for our community, Sarah.
Oh, you're welcome. We were hoping that maybe it might have gotten delayed, but we're looking at hopefully supporting you in a much greater fashion, you know, later on, probably next year.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. Let's see here. Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns, council member?
None, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario, any questions or concerns?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question for Sarah. How many people do we help here in the community in San Luis? How many families do we help?
The number fluctuates, but typically we're right around 2,000 families, and those are unduplicated numbers. So there's still a need down in San Luis, and as I mentioned, we'd like to expand our ability to to support that need as we go forward.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, I wasn't involved, I'll be honest, in asking these kind of questions before, but I just would like to know, how do we, do we ask for any type of ID for residents or any type of information from them when they're getting that kind of help?
I would say prior to COVID, yes. There is a process. They do have to show their ID and proof of residency in the community. But with COVID, we've gone to a no-touch, so they can show their ID, but we don't touch it. The majority of what we're doing is what we call mass distribution. We take the individual's name, but we don't have the resources yet through DES to verify that, due to they just don't want us in, they don't want to have contact with the clients, and the clients with us, so trying to minimize our interaction. But to answer your question, prior to COVID, yes.
Okay, do you guys have a record of the people that go and get that kind of help? Is it our residents, or is it mixed? Or how does that, do you have any information on that?
I can give you, I'll certainly provide you with a little bit more information after this meeting's over, but we do have numbers, and we do have some names. As I said, we've been directed by the state of Arizona to do mass distribution, which is minimum.
Okay. No, no, just, you know, just...
No, it's a good question, and it's something that, you know, we have the same question with every community, and our policy is to have the person that we're providing the food to give us their ID with a photo on it, and when they first come, we always ask them to bring a proof of residency, meaning a utility bill, a water bill, something that grounds them to the area. And that's still our policy right now. We're just a little bit more lax with it, just because of the overload that we're getting in trying to process people quickly. And right now, it's summertime, so we're really trying to hustle people through, just so they don't pass out from the heat.
Okay, thank you. That's great information, and it's good to know how's the process.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mario. I'm going to go ahead. Matias, any questions or concerns?
Sir?
Matias?
Alright, you got me?
I got you.
Alright, cool. I just want to say thank you to the Yuma Food Bank. I know that they do a great job, not only...
Huh? We lost you.
And... Sorry?
We lost you for a couple of seconds, sir.
Oh, am I back or not?
You're back, you're back. And you're gone again.
Yeah, alright. I'm losing it, right.
Okay, good job, good job. Thank you, Matias. Gloria, any questions or concerns, Gloria?
No, I just want to thank Food Bank, especially this time of the, thank you for your good effort to assist here in San Luis. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Gloria. It's our pleasure.
Thank you, Gloria. Jose Ponce, questions or concerns?
Yes, Ms. Sarah, and this time of the COVID-19, so everybody accepted, I mean, to receive the Food Bank benefits. That means including people from out of this region?
Well, if you're talking specifically San Luis, we don't refuse people that come when we're distributing in San Luis, just like we don't refuse people that come up here from San Luis to receive food. But we do take their names down, so we do that manually. We don't have the ability to put it in the system yet, but it doesn't look like we've had many duplications. Sometimes it happens, just because people forget. A lot of our clients are elderly from San Luis, and I may not be as old as some of them are, but I know some days I have to take a lot of notes to remember what I need to do, and I can understand when they think they've gone for food and they're not sure.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, man. That's good. I mean, thanks to the Food Bank.
You're very welcome. I want to add this so that the council all understands. We had a 28% increase over March of last year through June of last year. So the impact was pretty substantial, I think, for the people at different times during that four-month period when people were unemployed, and it did make a difference. Hopefully, this time next year, I'll be able to share more detailed information, so we can kind of see of those, that 28%, how many of them were from San Luis.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Once again, thank you. Thank you so much, and we're going to go ahead and go with our next item. And Tadeo, I guess the consensus is to proceed. Okay, Tadeo?
Yes.
Okay, good. So noted. Thank you. We're going to go with item number 2B, Discussion on Possible Direction Staffing in All Matters Regarding the Contract with SMN Food Ministry for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021. Francia?
Alright, so for Heta Money this fiscal year, during our last budget meeting, I was recommended to increase a total of 2,000 for a total of $5,000 to be given this fiscal year to Heta Money. And they continue to provide food to our community, and I believe last week they did three days. And we do have Padre Castro on the line for any further questions.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good, good, good. First and foremost, Pastor Castro, thank you so much. Gracias por todo lo que hace por la comunidad. Thank you for everything you do for our community. It's amazing, the work you do, and you're full of energy. Te veo. You're everywhere, and I appreciate that, and you can tell you love what you do. And I would like to personally thank you for what you do, for your ministry, your food ministry, what you do, and your volunteers. They're never-ending. Nunca se cansan. Siempre ayudando. Siempre, I mean, gracias de veras. Y espero que es poco lo que, o sea, lo poquito comparado a lo mucho que hace usted. Y muchísimas gracias de veras, desde parte del bolsillo, desde parte de mi oficina. Muchísimas gracias, Pastor Castro, por todo lo que hace.
Amen. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and open the floor to council members. Council, Vice Mayor, questions, concerns, comments?
None, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions, concerns, comments?
No, Mayor. Gracias, Pastor Castro, por su servicio a la comunidad.
Thank you.
Matias Rosales, questions, concerns?
No, thank you, Mayor. Just thank you.
Thank you. Mario Buchanan Jr., questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, not at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Torres, questions or concerns? You are mute? Thank you.
I'm sorry. Nada más gracias al pastor por todo lo que hace por nuestra comunidad. Sé que hace, como dice, adelante. Siempre está adelante de todo, y pues, adelante, pastor. Hay que seguir con esta labor que Dios le dio.
Amen. Thank you so much.
Gracias, Gloria. Jose Ponce, questions or concerns?
No, ay, es buena, tenga. Pastor Castro, mucha gracia por todo la ayuda que nos ha dado a nuestra comunidad, y estamos muy contentos, y que Dios le dé mucha vida a la cosa. Siga ayudando. Gracias. Thank you, Señor Ponce.
Gracias, Jose. Thank you. And the consensus is to proceed. Pastor, otro año, esperemos que este año sea mejor para todos. Esperemos que la vacuna para el COVID venga, or por lo menos el primero, los primeros meses del próximo año. Y muchísimas gracias por no detenerse, por seguir adelante. Y nomás estamos con usted. Muchísimas gracias, pastor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all the council members. I really appreciate for your help and support in our ministry. Thank you so much. This pandemic time is a tremendous challenge for our church and for our program, Food for the Community. Praise God, because God provides a lot of products from different sources, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Tucson, Phoenix, Nogales, different places, and we are a fountain of blessing for different organizations, like Mexican Immigration. We provide it for water. Police Department, we provide water, and we have the opportunity to participate on city parades and community programs, and really, I really appreciate for your help, because I have a lot of things, I have a lot of ways to say thank you for each of you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And, okay, the consensus is to proceed. Okay, Tadeo?
Thank you, Mayor. Will do.
Okay, good. We're going to go ahead and go with our next subject, which is item number 2C, Discussion on Possible Action Staffing in All Matters Regarding the Approval Contract with the Yuma County Arts and Culture Group for the 2021 Annual Blazing Desert Comic-Con Event in San Luis, Arizona for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021. Francia?
Alright, so this fiscal year for Comic-Con, a total of 5,000. In the agreement, we did include that the event can be held virtually or in person, depending on how the COVID-19 situation is. As for dates, we have March 2021 to June 30, 2021, and Kay's here, and Mr. Carrillo is here for any further questions.
Hi, Mr. Carrillo. Primero, I'd like to thank you, and Comic-Con is always something that's happening here in San Luis, and I appreciate for bringing it and continuing to be Comic-Con. And when is the event scheduled? What's the date right now? That's the date for Comic-Con?
May I say, council members, congratulations to a great company and a lot of nice people. My, uh, the, 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 Comic-Con has been certified even...
I'm here. What are you saying? Yeah, there's something wrong with your speaker or your mic?
I think IT is saying you can get closer to the mic, Mr. Carrillo.
Can you hear me now?
Mr. Carrillo, can you?
I can hear you well.
Okay, you can hear you well. Okay, yeah, you're mumbling a little bit, but you were mentioning that you don't have a tentative date because of the current pandemic situation. So the date is tentative, and you're able to do that virtually?
Well...
Okay, good, 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 good. So, no, and I commend you, because it's going to be a lot of work. Now, that's going to be a challenge.
It's going to be a challenge, yes.
But I know you, you got the expertise, you got the young people, and they're going to be motivated. Students are AWC, and I just want to commend you, Mr. Carrillo, for everything you do, and you just don't stop, which is a good thing for our community. Gracias de veras.
Thank you, Mayor.
There we go. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor to council members. Vice Mayor, questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Africa Luna Carrasco, member, council member, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you. Matias, any comments, questions, or concerns?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Buchanan Jr., questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, not at this moment. Suerte, señor Carrillo, con eso de...
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, gracias, Mario. Gloria Torres, questions or concerns?
It's mute again.
Ay, si me están escuchando.
Yes.
Están pocas las personas que se interesan por nuestra comunidad como usted lo hace, señor Carrillo, y pues, muy agradecida de que usted haga ese esfuerzo por estar aquí en esta comunidad, dando es eso que usted hace por nosotros. Gracias.
Este año es un reto, pero esperemos, como dice el alcalde, que todo salga como lo estamos planeando, y queremos darle un espectáculo a San Luis.
En realidad, sí es un reto, porque esta situación que estamos viviendo es bien difícil para todos, para todos. Pero gracias por lo que usted aporta.
Gracias a usted.
Gracias, Gloria. Jose Ponce, questions or concerns or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Carrillo. Keep up the good work. I mean, wish you good luck, and anything we can do for you, and you know, just give us a call, get in touch with us, and we'll be able to help you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ponce.
Thank you, Jose Ponce. So, Tadeo, Francia, go ahead and proceed. The consensus is to proceed, and congratulations.
Mayor.
Yeah.
This is Kay. I just had a little more information on the contract. It's flexible up to June 30th, so there's no set date in the contract.
Okay, good. So do we have to set a date?
Well, anytime up to June 30th.
Okay, good, good, good. No, that covers it. That was my question. So I just want to make sure that Mr. Carrillo received the funding. I just want to make sure he doesn't get in delays, because it's hard enough that we're going to do it, he's going to do it virtually. So we need to make sure he has the funding to actually do it, so if there's not enough funding, we need to find resources, and we need to make sure that it gets done. So, Mr. Carrillo, we do it because we want to make sure that you get the funding in a not-in-delayed way, because it's going to take some work, and I commend you for it, because it's going to be some work. Okay? Gracias de veras. Thank you. So the consensus, okay, Kay, so point of clarification, everything is fine legally, legal wise?
Yes, we're good.
Good deal. So, Tadeo, Francia, so the consensus is to proceed?
Thank you.
Will do, Mayor.
Thank you so much. We're going to go ahead with the next item. It's item number 2B, Discussion on Possible Direction Staffing in All Matters Regarding the Approval of a Contract with Yuma County Arts and Culture Group for the San Luis Film Festival Event in San Luis, Arizona, Arizona for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021. Francia?
Alright, so for the film festival, it's very similar to the Comic-Con. It's a total of 5,000. This year, the film festival was, was and may be set to November 10 to the 13th, but we do have the clause that the funding can be used up to June 30th, 2021, to the end of our fiscal year. And again, we have to go on.
So we have a window, just in case it gets delayed. So it got delayed till November. Actually, November is a beautiful month, so it's a little cooler, and it's like, to come out with popcorn, you feel like eating popcorn. So it's perfect, and everything's coming to an end, and so I think it will be good. So once again, the film festival is something that happens in San Luis, Arizona, and I know you already have your groupies, people who already know it's going to happen. So once again, señor Carrillo, de veras gracias por todo lo que hace, porque, trust me, you spend a lot more than what you get. It's the effort and the work you do extra, because no, no cualquier persona lo hace, and I commend you, especially in the arts. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
No, claro que sí. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor. Vice Mayor, questions or concerns?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Matias Rosales, any questions or concerns?
None, sir.
Thank you. Mario Buchanan Jr., questions or concerns?
Mayor, no, todo bien. Gracias.
Gracias, thank you. Gloria Torres, questions or concerns?
No, I just want to thank you, Tony, and I hope we have a good movie this year. Last year was a very good documentary movie that you have with your products. I hope this year will be better than last year.
Thank you.
And I know Gloria goes to those events, so I'd probably go for the first one, but Gloria goes, and I congratulate you, and Gloria, thank you for supporting the arts. I'm going to go ahead. Jose Ponce, questions or concerns?
I want to thank Mr. Carrillo again, and you know it, I'll be in the front row, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, Mr. Ponce. Yes, I respect it, it is to cheers to his fans, and I appreciate it. And nomás, just let us know if we can help you in any way. Corin?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor?
Si, I can hear you.
Can I give you a brief update on what we've been doing on the festival?
Yes, I allow it. Yes.
Okay, so basically, the plan is to do it on a drive-in type of setting, and I've been working with your staff at the Parks and Recreation, and we're planning to do it as a drive-in, and it's going to be in one of your sports complexes. I believe it's the baseball complex, and we're all set. We have the movies. We have an alternate plan in the event that, you know, the CDC guidelines change. We might be doing it on a hybrid mode, which would be some in-person, some online.
Okay, good, interesting. No, you're already thinking ahead. No, 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 and driving would be something interesting, and so... I like that. I like the idea. Thank you, Mr. Carrillo, de veras. Thank you for the efforts and everything you do for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, may I ask you something?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can.
When he said, "Right, man," I mean, that reminds me of the old times, when I was in Yuma, remember?
I remember, and we packed everyone in the trunk, okay, and so, oh, yes, I remember.
The old times, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Carrillo.
Thank you, Mr. Ponce.
Gracias, gracias. So the consensus is to proceed, okay? Oh, and Francia?
Will do. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Once again, thank you. We're going to go ahead and go under item, let's see here, item number 2E, Discussion on Possible Direction Staffing in All Matters Regarding Proposed Agreement with the Arizona Inter-Agency Farm Workers Coalition Company for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021.
Alright, so as discussed during the budget meeting, we will be, this fiscal year, it's a total of 3,000. This is the second time we provide funding for the Arizona Inter-Agency Farmers Coalition, and this funding will be to provide San Luis, Arizona students with post-secondary scholarships. We don't have Ferny online. He wasn't able to join us today.
Well, that's fine, but trust me, he's probably doing something else, okay? He's always working. He's always doing different things. And that's one thing that the farmworkers, the Arizona Inter-Agency Farmers Coalition is something they do, and it's amazing the amount of scholarships they give out every year, and with our support and the community's support, we will continue supporting our youngsters who want to continue their education, and trust me, it's difficult. I mean, if you go to ASU, U of A, I mean, with, as it is, your four years are going to cost you $80,000. And so, and that's food and board tuition, everything like that, so it's $80,000 per student. So it's getting really expensive to go to college, and so any little help does help. And so what this coalition is doing, it's just amazing, and the amount of scholarships. And not only that, there's a lot of students from San Luis who apply for these scholarships. So I just, it's very uplifting to see a lot of our students actually go to AWC, go to U of A, go to ASU, and I'm very proud of them, so the kudos to Ferny and his organization. So I'm going to go ahead and open the floors. Vice Mayor, questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Matias Rosales, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mario Buchanan Jr., any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor. Everything good.
No, mayor, everything good.
Thank you. Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, mayor.
Thank you. José Ponce, questions or concerns?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. And the consensus is to proceed. So Tadeo, Francia, go ahead and proceed.
Will do, mayor.
Thank you so much. Now we're going to go to item number two F, discussion of possible direction of staff regarding the annual contribution to the forefront of international regional program to promote education, infrastructure, tourism and economic development. Tadeo, Francia.
All right, so this fiscal year for forefronted, we have a total of 7,598. This amount was approved by the forefronted mayors in their June 2020 virtual meeting. And the funding, it's continued to support economic development, education, infrastructure and tourism in the greater Yuma County region. We do have Nazar online for any further comments and questions.
I would just like to comment, Azar, you're doing a great job. And the thing is, not only are we focusing here in the region, but we're also going to Mexicali, Encenada, the San Diego area. So we're really trying to push for economic development for our region, not just for San Luis, but also for Yuma County as a whole, for San Martin, for Wilson, for Yuma. But not only in regards to jobs or possible candidates to come and provide and create jobs, but also we're looking at the cultural, we're looking at the education aspect. Being able to actually learn and educate yourself in Mexico, for example, and actually at the same time get credit as if you were going to a US university. So I mean, we're working in multiple aspects, education, tourism, how can we promote it? How can we promote San Felipe? How can we promote Rocky Point? I mean, different regions. And the thing is, if we don't do it, I can tell you right now, Imperial is doing it in California, they're doing it with Mexicari. And the thing is, and also San Diego and Tijuana are doing it. And so they know and it works for them and it's going to work for our region. We are growing, we are continuing to grow, even though our census only, there's only 35% participation as of right now for our census, which basically gives us only like one-third of the total population as of right now. But San Luis is growing. Let me remind everyone, we are the booming town of Arizona and the construction in Texas. So I just want to say, there's a lot of work ahead and it's a lot of extra meetings. And as I said, thank you so much for stepping up to the plate and actually doing a lot of the running around and meetings and emails. And it's just, it's amazing what we can do when we unite ourselves as a community, a Yuma County community. And I'm just very proud to be a part of it. It's a lot of work, but we have to do it. So that's it. You got it. Any question, concerns?
Mayor Sanchez, good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I totally agree with you, what you're saying about to promote our binational mega region as one economic block and also include those important topics such as education, tourism, infrastructure. We have a lot of challenges to overcome, but we can do that together as a team.
Perfect, perfect. I'm going to open the floors. Let's see here. Vice Mayor, any questions or concerns?
Just a comment, mayor. You're doing a very, very well job. As I said, I've attended a couple of your webinars, so continue the awesome work in promoting our region. Thank you.
You're welcome, Vice Mayor. Thank you. It's a pleasure to work with you and the whole staff and authorities in the city of San Luis. Thank you so much for your words.
Thank you. Afrika Luna Carrasco, council member, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mari Becannon Jr., any questions or concerns?
No, mayor, no questions.
Matías Rosales, any questions or concerns?
I should want to say thank you as well and thank you also for working with the Port Authority in partnership with the city. I know U M is a Buena, then, you know, doing what you guys can to promote our region. And you guys are going out to San Diego, going out to Mosio, when we've been able to travel. But I appreciate it and always being there and attending those meetings. That was one of the concerns we had with this organization is the accountability of them actually going and doing what they're supposed to. And you've proven that you're putting the time that needs to be done to bring this organization up. So thank you, Azar.
You're welcome, council member Matías. It is an honor to work with you and with the Port Authority. We work in very closely with Buena George, an excellent leader for dialogue organization. And like I said before, work as team and we are stronger working that way.
Thank you, Matías, and thank you, Azar. Let's see here. Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, mayor. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
José Ponce, questions or concerns or comments?
Sure. Yes, that's it. As well, thank you. Mr. Mendez.
You're welcome, Mr. Ponce. Thank you.
So the consensus is to proceed. So please, once again, thank you for the hard work, Mr. Mendez, what you're doing. You have, you have, actually, you have made this position a lot more challenging and that's what I was looking for. And great job and great effort and I do read your emails. Some things I don't answer, but I do read them, okay?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I need to tell you, but yes, gracias. So Afik, I'm sorry, Francia, proceed, Tadeo, proceed.
Will do, thank you.
Will do.
Okay, thank you so much. We are now going to go with the discussion of possible direction of staff in all matters regarding the proposed agreement with Yuma Regional Medical Center, Cancer Center for fiscal year 2020-21.
All right, so for this fiscal year, Y R M C is seeking city support to help with their cancer center. This fiscal year, they're requesting total 5,000, which was discussed during our budget meeting earlier this year. We do have Kathy Butler from the Y R M C online.
Yes, thank you, mayor, for having me this evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you.
Great. I just wanted to take this opportunity to talk about the COVID crisis that's occurred in our community and the cancer center response. We have taken care of a significant number of people who've had difficulty. We've also staffed the annex and we've also staffed many of the screening drives that we've had at community level. So the cancer center since February has been greatly involved in resolving the COVID challenge for our community. It's been our pleasure. It's been a challenge. I lived through the HIV crisis in the 80s. I never thought I'd see this again. It's been an amazing trip. Thankfully, none of our patients at the cancer center have become infected through contact to the cancer center nor any of the employees. So we, I just say kudos to everyone who's been involved in the program to make sure that the cancer survivors, the cancer program itself and the cancer program employees have done well. It's been a significant community pulling together and also effort. We do use the money from the cancer program that's donated to us by you to support chiefly the survivorship group. These are individuals who are post-therapy, who've survived, who continue to need support and programs. It's a very worthwhile program and I believe that the money is well-used and well-utilized. So we continue to contribute to the community, San Luis and up in Yuma as well. And it's not been an easy summer for us. We've not had our usual summer decrease. We've actually had increased volumes over the summer as we continue to provide health care to our residents, who have really been the bulk of the patients that we've seen throughout the summer. I appreciate this opportunity to talk about my program. I'm a little bit proud of it. And welcome any questions you might have.
Well, first and foremost, thank you so much for being part of our discussion right now. And it's actually essential. It's hard enough with the COVID situation and now you throw in cancer in between the mist. And it's really not only hard for the family, for the patient, but it's also hard for the establishment offering the services. I know you, Yuma Regional Medical Center personally, that you've gone beyond the colloquiality and it's something you have to do, especially with the pandemic. And with all the resources, scarce resources nationwide, you've done very well and especially in the cancer center. It's one thing that when we decided to support the cancer center was because it's something that we wanted to make sure that our community is also part of that support. And so I commend you for everything you do and I commend your staff and I commend for those people helping, those people that need the greatest help at this point in time. So it's just an honor and I commend everything you do. And I'm going to go ahead and open the floor to council members.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, questions or concerns?
Just a comment, mayor. I want to thank you in starting this program here for South County patients. As I have had a cousin attend the cancer center and with very excellent service. And this program that you guys started, I participated a couple of times with their annual modeling. So it just uplifts their spirit. So it's a pleasure to contribute to that part on an annual basis. So thank you for doing everything you do for our San Luis cancer patients.
I appreciate that and I find that such an uplifting experience. I have to stay in the background. I just see these women in particular beaming. They're so proud. They're so pretty. It's really a worthwhile project. Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Afrika Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns or comments?
No, mayor, no, no, just to thank you for the, for everything you do for our community as a whole. That's a very noble cause. Thank you.
Matías Rosales, any questions or concerns or comments?
Thank you. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mari Becannon Jr., questions or concerns?
No, mayor, no questions, no concerns. Just thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Very good. Gloria Torres, council member, any questions or concerns?
Yes, I just want to thank you for the excellent service that I have, Yuma Regional Medical Centers are doing for our people in this area. And I want to thank you, Maria Esparta, having and two other events that she has for helping all these, all our people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. José Ponce.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I just want to thank the lady for everything that's done for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And once again, thank you for the great service provided by the community, especially those people in need. The consensus is to proceed. Francia and Tadeo.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. We're going to go ahead and go with our next topic. Let's see here, item number two H, discussing possible direction of staff in all matters regarding the building of temporary fire station number two. Okay, Francia, chief.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor and members of council. This is an item that we talked about at the budget retreat. One of the things that I would want to comment on, building a temporary fire station out east. Last year, we had our three-year audit with AZDHS and we were able to get our CON renewed for another three years. One of the comments that was stated by AZDHS was that meeting our response times. Right now, we're meeting every single response times that AZDHS had set for us, but San Luis is growing exponentially so much to the east side that one of the questions was, will you guys be able to still respond and meet those response times to the east side of San Luis? We've been taking or putting in some measures to be able to meet those response times. Last year, we bought a Dodge Power Wagon so we can have four-by-four capability out to the east side, quicker response to the Avenue F area and to the prison, the DOC and the federal prison out there. The other thing is our ISO rating, 10 years or about eight years ago, when we had our audit for our ISO, we were a class three, well, we are a class three fire department, which their rate's from class one to class nine. And being a class three fire department is really good. There's only 1,500 fire departments that are, they can say they're a class three. But we were only two points away of being a class two fire department. And having that fire station out on the east side would have gotten us a rating of a class two. And the other point that I was going to say of building a temporary fire station out on the east side, right now with the COVID pandemic happening, I don't know if you guys have heard or have seen, a lot of fire departments, a lot of police departments have contracted the virus and have shut down fire stations for a certain amount of time. Well, we don't have that luxury here in San Luis to shut down a fire or a fire station because we only have one. That fire station was built to house 11 firefighters. Right now, we have 14 firefighters on a daily basis. We up-staffed that third ambulance last October and we're actually looking at if we do open that fire station out east, if there's a possibility that we can actually up-staff a fourth ambulance here in San Luis. You guys can, with all the help you guys have done for those residents of San Luis to have three ambulances, that's unheard of. Now, to have four, it's going to be, you know, we're trying to see how we can work it and there is a possibility. So we're going to try to maneuver and see if we can up-staff a fourth ambulance, but that's still maybe a year or so away. I think it's, you know, I think Mr. Ponce, a couple of meetings, like two or three meetings ago, he stated that he hears the fire department or the ambulance is going day and night to transporting. And I'm telling you, the guys are, they work hard, they've been busy. We've been the fire department in Yuma County that has been exposed to more COVID patients. I think we've had about 125 exposures. And, you know, they continue to work hard and continue to, you know, to provide the best services to the city of San Luis. If you guys have any questions on what we're planning on doing out on the east side, we're planning on maybe purchasing two lots out east and building a house to be our temporary fire station. If you guys have any questions, I'm open to your questions.
I'm going to go just a comment first. It's more like a comment and I think, thank you, chief. And first and foremost, I would like to thank the first responders, your EMTs, your fire, your paramedics. And yes, if I work a 12-hour shift or 10-hour day, you guys are working a 24-hour shift. I see you guys are tired. I see, but you don't stop. And we are so grateful to have such a great fire department. And I'd like to thank council members also because for our funding, all the state-of-the-art equipment that the city of San Luis has for our fire and it's amazing what you guys do. I think one of the biggest or the best investments was those actually self-elevating or electric beds you guys have. It's amazing how we have saved a lot of injury from our fire, fires, EMTs and paramedics by using something, they're a little pricey, but I think they're all worth it. And so, and having now a possible substation in La F section is just amazing. It's something that is needed. We have discussed it in the past, but I think it's time for us to actually do and actually work on a solution. And once again, I congratulate your staff. I congratulate you, chief. And all members of staff who have been participating. And all I want to say is like, let's make this happen. It's something that we need, it's something that's needed in our community. Unfortunately, our public tax is not passed. That would assure this 2.2 or 2.4 million dollar facility. But we don't have that money, so we're going to go ahead and start. It's going to take us longer. But a temporary unit is a must, especially in that area. So chief, I commend you. And Glenn, you had a question? You have a comment?
Honorable mayor, just so that you're aware, on your next week's agenda will be the proposed escrow instructions and the proposed loan to buy the land for the park. And a portion of that park can be used to locate this fire station.
Very good, very good. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor. Vice Mayor, any questions or concerns?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to read something and it's in relations to the COVID pandemic and some other issues beside the substation, but it's all correlated together, so I'm just gonna read this letter. "In light of the declared civil emergency as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the city of San Luis should take in consideration the dedication and commitment to serve our community of all the firefighters as medical professionals. Due to the extraordinary circumstances caused by COVID-19 pandemic and the impact of this emergency to the city's first responders who deal with health emergency every day and are required to continue to work every day as essential work employees, additional compensation is in order for the extraordinary work and dedication these employees provide to our city's residents. Firefighters not only deal with additional expenses at home providing additional cleaning and protection items to their own homes and families, this is a small investment on their part. The biggest price they pay is additional distancing from their loved ones at home. Knowing very well they just interacted and cared for positive COVID-19 patients during their regular work shift and sometimes require overtime hours worked, they continue to provide protection to our residents and our families. Firefighters physically and emotionally distancing from families does bring additional emotional and health stress to them. Local firefighters have lost close families to this pandemic. We can all agree that as a result of this emergency, firefighters should receive incentive pay, hazard pay for essential workers or for actual work performed during this emergency. This should include employees placed on paid leave due to COVID-19 work-related exposures. The city of San Luis firefighters have been diagnosed with COVID-19 and thankfully have recovered. Incentive pay still has many considerations including state and federal laws and of course the health of city budget. Nonetheless, we still have the responsibility to support them. In addition to this, Mayor, I would like to consider our local police department in this so that we can further look into this. And I would like to, since we received three million nine hundred and ninety, three million, oops, three million nine hundred and ninety-two, seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars as a result of Arizona Cares Grant. So I would like to further continue this discussion, Mayor. And I just wanna thank our firefighters and also our police department for doing this amazing work for our community. We know the fears that come upon them when they, they have to do this on a daily basis and as I read, you know, an additional fear of going home and trying to distance from their family members. So a big, big shout-out to firefighters and our police department. So thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I totally agree about that. And I think it's something in discussion we could have, and I believe that they had already been talking, but I know Yuma County has already approved compensation for our first responders and we should actually look into it. So with the fire station, I think we should also look at possibility of compensating and we should actually look as the model, see what the Yuma County did as a whole. I can tell you right now, our guys, our fire and our police have been exposed, especially our fire, have been exposed to a lot more cases of COVID patients. And one thing about San Luis, when San Luis is called, when San Luis PD or fire are called is because, it's not because the patient is, has a little shortness of breath or, no, it's because they're ill. And I've seen our guys work directly with the patients and it's amazing what they do. So we should be very proud, and we are very proud, of our fire department for everything you do. And I agree with you, our police department also. So we only have one fire station, we only have one police station, and if COVID has affected both the fire and police, but we have been able to control its propagation, we have been able to provide the services, non-interruptive services, if I remind, let me remind everyone. And I commend you, Chief, and I commend your staff for taking care of yourself because it's a toll. Not only are you exposed to a new virus, but you also have to go back home to your loved ones. And that's the last thing you wanna do is expose your loved ones. So I can personally understand that even though you wanna be close to your loved ones, but something in you tells you and what you've seen during that day that you cannot get close to them. And it's not because you don't wanna be with them, it's because you have to protect them. And so I commend fire, I really do, and for those who have fallen ill to the virus, I know they're back to work and it's hard work. And so, but I commend you and I agree with our Vice Mayor. We really need to, in that discussion, we should continue this discussion. And I don't wanna discuss, I mean, we should be discussing it this next year. I mean, because the second wave is on its way. So it's a fact. So come November, September, December, there's a high possibility we're gonna start seeing a lot more cases again. And so, so let's get ready, guys, and we definitely need that station, that temporary station in our east side of town. And I commend our firefighters and our police department. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor to the rest of the council members, please. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions, concerns or comments?
No, Mayor, just I wanna say I'm very supportive of the project. Thank you, Chief Ramirez, for an awesome job that you're doing. So much-needed project, so let's work on getting it done.
Sure will, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco. Mathias Rosales, questions, comments or concerns?
Yes, Mayor, they say, saying says, a picture says a thousand words. Our community outreach Facebook page for the fire department posted a picture a few weeks ago showing one of the ambulances after a call. I mean, that picture shows what our firefighters have to go through on a daily basis and how important those ambulances are to our community and the need for us to expand our presence in the east side of town. I do that commute to Yuma sometimes two, three times a day and I run into the ambulances, dropping off people at the hospital, coming back and forth. So it is an urgent need that our residents need, our employees, our fire department employees, as well as safety, need that presence in the east side of town. So like you say, Mayor, I commend the chief for bringing this to us and it's something that is priority number one for us. And we gotta be prepared, especially the east side, our industry over there, our industrial park, more residents, so we gotta be ready to cover the full city. So thank you, and this is a priority on behalf of myself as well.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mathias. Councilmember Mari Becannon Jr., questions, comments or concerns?
Yes, Mayor, just a small comment. Yes, we really need this and please, Chief Ramirez, thank our employees and keep up the great work, okay?
Thank you.
Make us proud.
Thank you, Councilmember Becannon. Gloria Torres, questions, comments or concerns? You're renewed, Gloria.
I said with this fire station project in east side, it's going to be a blast to this area. And this is one of the petitions that we have for our constituents in east side. So thank you, Chief, for this project, it's gonna be just a blast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Torres. Jose Ponce, Councilmember Jose Ponce, questions, comments or concerns or comments?
Thank you, Chief Ramirez, and you know, you got my support, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. So what the consensus is, we're very grateful and thank you, Chief, for everything you do. Please thank your staff and let's continue the good work. So the consensus is to proceed.
Thank you.
Okay, Francia?
Yeah, will do.
Perfect. We're gonna go with item number two, I, discussion and puzzles to doing staff in all matters regarding the selection of concept design to move forward with the master plan and cost estimates for the new community park. Mr. Galaviz, or staff?
It's me. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and administration. Tonight, I'm looking for some direction from you. We've spoken about the various plans for the park and to my understanding, I think this is the one we agreed upon and I wanted just to review this with you tonight. And if there was any comments or questions on this design plan, the reason I request just a confirmation so that we may move forward. We've been working with various departments on this design and we just wanna make sure that this is what the council, mayor and council wanna see or look as a conceptual plan for the future for this park. And to be able to follow up with J2 Design who are helping us with this layout to provide, come back to mayor and council with estimate of cost estimates so that you're able to see what we're able to, as we start this process, like I mentioned earlier, legal that, you know, you will be purchasing or reviewing the purchase of the land this month. And so we just wanted to kind of, I wanted to review that with you and see if there was any questions anyone may have.
Mr. Galaviz, I just have a, I just have a comment and it's something that I know we don't have millions of dollars to actually build the whole complex in a year or two, but this is the beginning and the thing is, we need to guarantee the land and at the same time, we need to show our constituents that we're also thinking about the east side. We are fortunate enough to have our park, which is George Junior, and George Junior's has served us very well, but we have outgrown George Junior. In early nineteen eighty, the city of San Luis had one park. In twenty twenty, we only have one park, but yet our population has grown from nine, ten thousand to almost thirty-seven thousand with all the construction going on. So things are moving, but we wanna make sure that we're able to offer our kids, our adults, the same training or participation or advance like every other. I very common sometimes that on the east side, that we have forgotten about that and no, we have not forgotten about that. I think this regional park is a necessity for us to grow healthy. We need green space. Our general plan requires us to have or at least consider a certain percentage of greenery and it's something we have been lacking. And so this is not gonna be a ten, twelve-acre, nine-acre park, we're looking at a twenty-acre complex that's gonna take some time, but we need to start now. Because if we decide to postpone it or move on, and the thing is, the location is perfect. It's next to our community, it's next to, I mean, people can walk from any part of the east side or on that area, you can walk and actually participate. And so if we can at least put grass on it and actually we can do a lot of things on it. So eventually, we've outgrown George Junior in regards to concerts, in regards to Fourth of July, and it would be something good that we take the event or the festivities to there. So I commend you, Louis, I commend your staff and I have no problem with supporting. Of course, we have to support because what you do, guys, is amazing, the park's works is amazing. So that was my comment. Thank you, Mr. Galaviz.
Thank you, Mayor.
See, I wanna go ahead and open the floor to Vice Mayor, any questions, concerns or comments?
Yes, Mayor. Back in January two thousand and eighteen, I had requested to put on a work session in regards to a designated special needs playground. So that's my question, Louis, if you have already, you know, thought about it and remembered that that was part of the discussion. So that's all my comment is to make sure we have a special needs playground.
Yes, Mayor, I mean Vice Mayor, where this says playground area on the map, what they're doing nowadays is that's incorporated into the playgrounds that we'll be selecting so that special needs individuals will be able to participate in that playground area and still be available to other residents or children to play in. So that is definitely something that we'll point out.
Well, thank you very much, Louis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, any questions, comments or concerns?
None, Mayor, thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
Mathias Rosales, questions, comments or concerns?
Looking forward to working with the staff and Louis in regards to this important project for our city. I know the residents are excited, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the, two weeks ago, and you know, I've been telling people, have the money, we don't have property tax, but it's something that's gonna take, hopefully, within the next five, few years, be able to get this to a full completed project. So thank you, Louis. Need or any, you know, assistance, we're here, let us know, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mathias. Councilmember Mari Becannon Jr., questions, comments or concerns?
Yes, let's do it. I'm ready, okay? Look at that positive vibration right there with Louis. He looks happy that we're doing this.
Yeah, definitely.
All righty, thank you very much for your help and thank your people, you know, that are working on this project, we, you know, that our community needs a bigger, you know, place, you know, that they can spend time with their families and, you know, council also, you know, is doing a great job, you know, bringing this idea to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mari Becannon Jr. And Gloria Torres, comments, questions or concerns, Gloria?
Yes, I wanna ask, Louis, do this park has, is going to be having assessments?
The assessment that we will be working with the developer and the other departments in, because there is, we're looking at retention areas, so we're gonna develop that and work on that for, there will be some cost maintenance that will be allocated, but we're still developing to move forward with that. But I'll be working with Public Works and Community Development just to finalize what exactly on the plans when submitted for the development next on the south side of the park to see what the needs will be on the retention area. But there will be, there will be an assessment provided, just we don't have exactly the area yet that's gonna be needed. We're waiting for the development to provide the plans.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Jose Ponce, questions or concerns?
No, I just wanna say that, thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
So the consensus is to proceed, so Louis, thank you, thank your staff and thank your administration, and I know our attorneys have been involved also heavily. So once again, thank you and let's make this happen.
Mayor, I would just like to add that we'll be working with the departments in the city looking at infrastructure and how we can be cost-effective in trying to develop more of this area and faster or as quickly as possible so residents can start benefiting from this area. from this area. We are looking with, with finalizing this design and coming back to you for approval, that will also help us with going out for some funding. We're looking at various types of funding sources and grants, sponsorships, naming rights. We're gonna try to think out of the box, hopefully to provide more funding to be able to move this project forward with the limited funding we have. But hopefully, we can have others, other revenue sources that we can move forward with. And so that's a challenge that our department has taken, and we're looking at working with the other departments to see how we can develop that.
Okay, the consensus is to proceed. So thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and go ahead and number two J, discussion and puzzle direction and staff and all matters regarding the bidding process for the construction of the 9B restroom facility project. Mr. Galavies?
Yes. Again, good evening. So we went out to bid for the 9B project, the restrooms at 9B area. We had a number in mind that we had spoken to other developers a year ago on what the, what we estimated the cost was or proposed. We went out to bid, and those quotes came back, double of what we had anticipated. So staff is recommending, I spoke with other departments, and staff is recommending that we reject the three bids and look at getting direction from mayor and council in providing, well, letting us provide maybe subcontracting out some of the work and doing some of the work in-house to stay within that budgeted amount for this restroom project.
Okay, so Louis, you're recommending that we don't accept those three bids?
Yes, that would be my, my recommendation that we reject the three bids, and if having direction or requesting that we could move forward by looking, working with other departments and subcontracting out some of the work and doing some of that work in-house to be able to complete this project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Louis. I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor. Vice Mayor, questions, comments or concerns?
I think I would like to take staff's recommendation and move forward as far as subcontracting and doing some of the work in-house. I think that's a great idea. If we can save some money, that's gonna be a good deal. Thank you, Louis.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions, comments or concerns?
None, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthias Rosales, comments, questions or concerns?
None, Mayor. I agree.
Thank you. Councilmember Buchanan, any comments, questions or concerns?
Ah, no, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gloria Torres, comments, questions or concerns?
No, Mayor. Thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Jose Ponce, comments, questions or concerns?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So it appears you, we proceed with your recommendations, Louis and staff.
Okay, and I'll be bringing this up to next week's council meeting.
Thank you, once again. So Tadeo Francia, proceed?
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go with item number two K, discussion and puzzle direction and staff and all matters regarding modification of the general rules and policies for open access, open areas and parks around the city. Louis?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, again, this is my final item for me. We're wanting to update the park rules and policies. Currently, I believe it's ordinance 378. We wanna, that refers to some of these closing of parks. It's very vague or very broad, I should say. It doesn't define. And so I've been working with the different departments, especially police and fire, and with legal, on what rules and policies that would help with, provide the enforcement and also the welfare of our parks, the betterment of our parks. So I'm proposing these park rules and policies to be updated. That will address those. At the bottom, it also, we're gonna add about following guidelines from the governor, from the health department, of course, from the city, especially during these times. So that will be added also. Also included will be the no camping, and that gives us, that gives PD a little bit more enforcement opportunity. And then the other ones are kind of self-explanatory. But if you could all look at number five on the park rules and policies, this is what I'm recommending, and I would like, you know, to have some feedback. I highlighted it. The park, the park hours, I've been looking at different cities locally and throughout the state. They vary in the times that the park opens and what time it's closed to the public. As you can see in parentheses, unless it's authorized by the city, you know, we have a van or somebody wants to reserve for certain hours, that would be something that we could work with PD on. I've spoken to the chief. He's, he's good with that, you know, from sunrise to 10:00 PM. But I just wanted to kind of see if mayor and council, you had any feedback or any concerns or questions on that particular policy or rule?
Louis, I have no, I have no discussion, no, no problems with it. I think they need to be modified. I think we need to make the necessary changes to be able to make this happen. I know staff, we don't want staff to be limited or restricted in regards to the project, in regards to, I mean, having a lot of, unfortunately, there's a lot of rules and guidelines that were done in the past, and we need to look at them also. So I agree with you. I commend staff for looking at them. And this is the time, because we're not building at this point in time. We're not doing a lot of the things that they assume why these rules were created. So I agree with you, Louis, and people of the world, continue doing what you're doing. So I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor to councils, council members. Vice Mayor, comments, questions or concerns?
This is good that we're updating some of this rules and policy. I'm fine with sunrise to 10:00 PM, Louis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, comments, questions or concerns?
Louis, a question about the hours. When you looked at other cities, particularly cities with, that have the summer heat like we do, do they have different summer hours? Something that goes a little bit later at night? And I'm just saying because during the summer, I know people like to walk, I mean, not necessarily maybe till 10, but, you know, what if they do, or kids like to go and play, you know, basketball and stuff like that. So I was just wondering if there's different summer hours for areas, like hours?
Yes, Councilwoman, there, there is, you know, a discretion with PD. One of the reasons, and maybe the chief if, has a different response, 10 o'clock, we kind of looked at because it was usually curfew time for minors. But again, if you would like us to consider that, but that was one of the things that we've been, that's been one of the topics is this, and maybe the chief can shed some light on that.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. This is a terrific question, and sometimes we wrestle with it a little bit more than others. But one of the things that we thought about was if you extend the hours a little bit more than 10:00 PM to a midnight, is you'll have a place where people can come and conjugate, and at that particular point, criminal activity may take place. I think it's great that we've opened it from sunrise. Some parks don't open until 6:00 AM, some until 8:00 AM, simply to shut it down a little bit earlier in the morning to allow people to be able to get there and create a barrier so that people don't loiter, people don't do criminal damage. And so when Louis approached us with this particular idea, I was very supportive of it because I think it gives us enough leeway in the morning for people to get there, especially those that are early risers. Sunrise timetables are different every single day, and during the summer, obviously, in the winter, it's a little bit different. But I think consistency to keep it at 10:00 during the summer is going to be obviously a little bit cooler at that point. It still is consistent during the winter. It gives them a little bit more night hours, as far as that's concerned too, when the weather is actually very good. So I think to avoid any type of criminal activity in the way that, in which Louis wrote it very specifically was to give us the leeway to where we don't need to put the ARS statutes for criminal conduct on there, but also allows to enforce those and those that would violate city code. So we really thought this through, but we would definitely take direction if you really feel that it needs to be 11:00 or 12:00 midnight to accommodate our residents, we certainly would be open to that idea as well.
Thank you for the explanation, and I fully understand that extending the time can open up for loitering and such. But I was just thinking about, you know, like, I know I like to walk and I never go out that late walking, but in case I did go, I would go to the park because it's lighted and all that. But I guess we can, we can, in my opinion, just keep it at 10 and use discretion. I mean, I don't know what the other council members would think, but I think 10:00 is good.
And I can, yeah, and I can add to that too, because I think it's a great one, especially if there are running and walking trails that the park would have to it. It's a lighted section, obviously on our patrols, we would patrol those as well. One of the things that it does do is that in, number two, it says individual or groups with reservation permits have priority use. There is a way within that that you may be able to build in that if there is a group or certain individuals that have a permit to operate a little bit more, that they also would be able to maybe go past a 10:00 PM timetable as well and give them a little bit more flexibility as a group to do that as well. So that is something that can be in consideration as well, and that point's very well taken.
Thank you, sir.
And Councilwoman, I'd just like to add, you know, looking, I went looking and searching at all different types of parks all around the state, just kind of coming up. I didn't want to make this list very long to add too many rules, but I, we did want to focus on those important ones, like I mentioned again for that, for making this a safe and, but accessible place for our residents. Sunrise, there was some parks, like the chief mentioned, that open at 6:00 or 7:00. Sunrise, I thought would be the best. And then 10, the recommendation, there are some parks that were closing at 9:00, some at 11:00, some at 10:00. The majority of them I saw was 10:00. But again, I am open for any type of recommendations, and we can, we can see what we can do.
Thank you, Louis.
Thank you for answering those questions. That's a very good question, Africa. Thank you. Matthias Rosales, any comments, questions or concerns?
Yeah. For example, when I think of parks and activity that happens in our community, you know, I know we have a lot of the smaller parks around town, but like George Junior being the main park, how would you address, we're having city events, the leagues that are the all-nighters, or, you know, even the baseball season, basketball season, where there's a 10:30, something, 7:00, how do you, what is the plan with that? And then my thought also on the weekends, being a person that has kids and we use the park sometimes in the summertime, like like Mascarasco mentioned, that it's hot, we sometimes get there around 7:30, 7:40 and practice around 11:00 because of the heat. So, but again, that's on the field. So is there gonna be some kind of verbiage that as long as you're doing activity related field items in the park, or is that helpful for loitering to be able to just not have people hanging around drinking beer or doing whatever they're doing in a shade structure or something?
I think this, you know, number two, like the chief mentioned, will provide us at least a little bit of information on who's utilizing the fields if they want to. It's open. One of the things that we do, especially when it comes to, that we do now, that it comes to reservations and any type of events that we know are going to be later on or specific, we send out every week for the weekend, or we send out this information to the police department. So they're aware of the activities and events that we have that might be, that are reserved, that include if their alcohol is, they've have registered for the alcohol permit, contact information of the person that is in charge of that program or activity. So we currently have been doing that for the past couple of years, just so PD is informed of who's utilizing the parks and at what time when it's a reserve. Again, the open space, we're, that would be something that I think PD would have to address because they're the enforcement. But maybe there can be something that can be worked out.
And I think that's a tremendous question, because there's going to be times, I think, with baseball leagues, soccer leagues and those types of events that are either paying for the use of that facility and/or if it's a, maybe a city sponsored event like a soccer tournament, softball tournament, a baseball tournament, where we know that it's going to go past 10:00 PM. During the summer, it's a little bit hotter. Those are things that can be taken into consideration. It's really not a hard and fast rule, but it's just a target rule that gives us the ability to enforce it. I mean, certainly if there's something going on at one end of the park, and yet you've got people clear over at the other end of the park, you know, are the two really connected or are people just hanging out there and not associated with the activities that are going on? So I think it's kind of a moving target. Those are things that we can work through as well. But I think those are things that can be taken into consideration as well during that particular time. But terrific question.
And just to add to that, you know, this is a living document. So, I mean, we can, you know, we'll be working on a resolution for this. But, you know, if we see in the future that there is an issue or a concern, or maybe something we need to address, just we can always bring it back. But we feel that this standardized rules and policies would best benefit the community. Again, maintaining our parks and keeping them safe and a fun place for people to go.
Excellent question. Thank you so much, Matthias. Marty Buchanan Jr., any comments, questions or concerns?
I have a concern. It sounds very nice and easy, the way that you guys are explaining to us, what you guys plan to do, you know, with the time and stuff. We just have to be involved. Everyone has to be involved with the same rule. And, but I mean, I just, I'm afraid that we will get in trouble because of the needs of the community, right? So I guess we have to work along with that, with their needs also, because we're the party poopers and, you know, we gotta stop because it's 10:00 PM. And you know how that works, you know, culture, you know, they keep going and going, and they don't have, they don't, they don't know when to stop. But, you know, like, I mean, they're being peaceful, you know, they're being family oriented, you know, they're doing things, you know. And for us to just go and bother them and tell them to go home because it's done, I mean, we have to close the park. I mean, it's just, it's just different for me, you know, I see it different. And I understand Africa's concern and Matthias also, you know, I understand your concerns because, I mean, we go through this, you know, we live this every day. this, you know, we live this every day, and, you know.
Again, Councilmember.
I'm just going through those troubles.
Sorry to interrupt. Councilmember, and we understand, and that's why I highlighted this item, because I know this would be the item that we would need to review. Again, we are at whatever you would like, you know, the mayor and council, what you recommend, or you, how would you, how you would like us to move forward, we can move the time. You, that's why I come to you today, so you can provide me that direction if you feel that that needs to be different.
Okay, well, talk about it, I guess, you know, we'll bring it up, and if we have any issues, you know, we'll try to fix it.
Okay, so it's very important we look at the parks and rules policies, once it gets reviewed, once it's recommended, I think each council member is, should actually look and ask the community, ask your supporters, and see what they think. I think we need to go, we need to make a consensus, a very logical consensus, and so, so Mario has a point there, but then again, we have limited staff, and so, I mean, we need to be careful also with the overtime, and so, but we need to look at the needs of our community also, but there has to be some restrictions, and I agree. Okay, thank you. Claudia Torres, comments, questions, or concerns?
No, I agree with you, Mayor, that whatever you decided, or the rest of the council decided, I agree with them, I mean, I don't have any, no comments, I mean, whatever you decided.
Thank you, Claudia, thank you. Councilmember Jose Ponce, comments, questions, or concerns?
Well, Mayor, I think, yeah, we can live in a, you know, until 10:00 p.m., and then somebody, if somebody needs a time for a longer time, I mean, all they can do is apply for a permit, and, you know, and get authorization.
Yeah, and so, Councilmember Ponce, just to let you know, you know, if it is a city event or sponsored event, then, you know, if they need extra practice time or those things, we are more than happy to accommodate, and we will, and we will inform the PD, and so I think it gives us a little bit more, we're, you know, we're not going to be charging the coaches and those for that unless they're a non-city group, but then again, they could always request, and we could, we can work with them. This is not to limit the opportunities, but to have, like the chief mentioned, a little bit of flexibility to make sure that those that are not there to, you know, participate and have a good time at our parks, that they go somewhere else.
Yeah, I agree with you, Louis, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask one more question, please? Sorry.
Yes, you can.
Uh, just something real quick, so up to date, is, are there a lot of issues that happen in the park after 10:00 or at nighttime?
We've had vandalism, graffiti, damaging of playground equipment, just this last year, we spent over $25,000 just replacing slides that people damaged. And so, a lot, well, some of the areas are lighted, or we provide some lighting, but some are not very well lit, and that's something we're working and trying to develop, so that we have well-lit areas, but some areas are dark, and it's the visibility for the, for PD as enforcement, as an enforcement, is sometimes difficult.
And I, that is a phenomenal question, and let me address it this way. I'm not sure that you can really pinpoint criminal activity, even if you had a 10:00 p.m. to a midnight, I'm sure that it wouldn't happen at that particular time. I'm certain no matter what time it would, the park would close at, after that time to the time that it opens, is usually when criminal activity usually takes place. So I think it's a great question as far as that's concerned, but we have seen an uptick in some of the criminal activity as far as criminal damage is concerned, and the things that Parks and Rec are going to have to replace after filing that police report, that really we as a city have to absorb. So it's a great question, but I think crime usually will happen, no matter what time you close it, it's going to be after that, and I think that that should help you out a little bit, but thank you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Again, this is something that we can maybe bring back next month, when maybe mayor and council had a chance to review and maybe talk to residents or get some feedback, so we'll work with legal and the city clerk's office and start developing this resolution, and then be able to bring it to council, but we'll follow up with the city administrator or the PIO and on any comments or anything that you may have.
Louis, maybe you should do one of those surveys that are real popular now, those with Facebook, you know what I'm talking about?
I was just going to ask you guys if you would like us to do that, and do a community survey regarding the rules. But see, but if I may interject here, I think the issue, or the, like Africa myself for having and working with the PD is, one thing is loitering at the park, which is hanging out, the other thing is actually activities. Again, my main concern is, I'm out there practicing at 9:30 on Sunday this week, when my daughter playing baseball, practicing at 10:30 and it's 10:45 because it's hot and we're out there, and then the police officer shows up and gives me a ticket. That's the problem I'm saying, so maybe in the ordinance or the rules, you know, you put in there if it's activity-related, and actual activity is physical sports activity, or have, for someone to call and say, we're here at the park practicing baseball and all this, you know, I want to make sure I'm in compliance or something, or an email, but that's the part that I'm having issue with, because, you know, we get, get a police officer that, hey, you're after 10:00, I'm going to give you a ticket, that's, we can't control that. As much as we can say we can use our discretion, we can't control that kind of situation happening down the road, especially in the summertime. Wintertime, trust me, 10:00, 11:00, no one's out there because it's too damn cold, it's...
Well, first of all, Councilmember Mathias, we would never cite you or your daughter, simply because...
Again.
No, I'm just kidding. No, I think that particular, I think that's a very valid point, because I know things will extend, but I think one of those things that we as officers try to do is at least understand what the situation is and use the proper discretion at that time. You know, we know that things could go over a half an hour or an hour, we get that, you know, we know that those things are going to happen. Our goal is not to go out there and just write tickets and arrest people, our goal is to educate people even with those things as well. So I think there are some exceptions to those particular rules that we should be able to accommodate you if those things start to happen, or accommodate any group at that particular point.
Again, Mayor and Council, you know, as you, as Councilwoman Carrasco mentioned, we can look at, you know, the summer and winter hour, we would just have to put some dates on it, so that enforcement would be able to, you know, they would be able to do that. So that's another option, and again, if you would like to do the survey, that's something else that if you'd like us to move forward with. I think everybody's going to say the later the better, but again, there's other things that we can do. Again, this is not to limit the participation, it's just to have a little bit better control of the situation, so, again, those who want to use our facilities, our open spaces, we want them to, those are just there just to see what they can do, those are the people that we don't.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, thank you. So the consensus right now is to go ahead and proceed, and I believe, let's make sure councils looks at the Parks and Rec policies, the recommended ones before, and then, I'm not against having a survey, I really am not against having a survey, but it's something that Parks and Recs have been working on, and let's, because there's going to be a lot of opinions, and so, but I, let's, let's also look at them, study them for yourself, ask a couple of questions, and let's do that survey. Okay? Was that the consensus? I'm going to go with each individual. Vice Mayor?
I'm fine with the recommendations staff made.
Okay, good. Africa Luna Carrasco?
What are, what are we going, what are you asking, Mayor? I'm sorry?
No, I'm asking that every council member look at the recommendations the staff does, and also, if warranted, have a survey.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that one, have a survey, to look at, review it, and come back and do a survey.
Okay, good. Mathias?
Yeah, I want to review it and sense some comments, except I think it's just an extra hour we need probably to 11:00 in the summertimes, and it's fine. Again, I'm just thinking of the summer, so I'm fine with that, too. Yeah.
Okay. Mario Buchanan Jr.?
Yeah, let's do the survey, and let's hear it.
Sounds good. Claudia, any questions, concerns, comments?
I'm fine with the recommendation, that whatever you decided, I mean.
Okay, thank you, Claudia. Jose Ponce, question, concerns regarding a survey, but we also need a review?
Yeah, I think it is, it is nice to have a feedback from the community, Mayor, I'd like to have a survey.
Okay, very good, very good. So the consensus, the majority is, was, the consensus was to proceed, but also with the survey.
Okay, Mayor, I will move forward with that, and I will stay in contact with the PIO and the city administrator to provide those results to you, all of you, and so the next time we can come up and hopefully adopt these.
Thank you, Louis, appreciate it. We're going to go ahead and go with the next item, our last item, is discussion of possible direction of staff and our matters regarding the temporary suspension of the imposition of late penalty fee, including shut-off fees and utilities accounts during the period of emergency due to coronavirus COVID pandemic. Okay, that is building and collecting.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and administration staff here, present at the council chamber. So as you read this item, it's about the suspension of services on water for non-payment. Back in, just to give you a little bit of backup or summary on the topic, earlier this year, back in April, city council approved the suspension of the imposition of penalties, and we also suspended the shut-offs of water services given the pandemic of the coronavirus. Back in that, at that time, a resolution was approved stating that the end of the resolution to be September 1st, 2020, which is about fairly a month away from us from now. So I'm here before you to request some guidance, and also present some information for you to review and see what's happening statewide, and also to bring some proposal before you and before you make any decision on how to move forward with this topic. I have contacted some other municipalities, agencies around the state, to be more precise, 22 of them, most of them are on the same, on the same page as we are, not suspending services, not charging penalties on utility accounts, and most of them do not know what's going to happen in the future, and do not have a direct direction of, as of when are they going to resume their normal services and practices. Five of those municipalities are do, are assessing penalty fees, but not disconnecting services, and three of them continue to their normal operations of disconnections and penalties. So if we continue to, with the resolution that we have, as I mentioned before, it'll be ending September 1st, and our normal operations will be to disconnect services of accounts that are delinquent on September 22. So I'm here to hear from you, what are your thoughts, your feelings towards this topic, and get some direction.
Okay, this is, this is a touchy subject. First and foremost, our economy is not booming anymore at this point in time. There's a lot of people unemployment, we are not sure what's going to happen. Obviously, the, our crop, our lettuce crops, and they need to be planted, but with the second wave coming, and according to everything, everything points out that we're going to get a second wave September, I mean, November, October, and it's going to be really hard. What I've heard, and what I've seen is municipalities are now enforcing, people are now, some people are now losing, for example, I mean, I mean, it's hard, it's still hard. People are still not working, we're not working at 100%, so I would recommend, if September is, September is the date that we set, we are still, we're still not over the pandemic, our numbers are decreasing, we plateaued, but people are still out of work. The assistance provided by the federal government, those extra $600 expired last week, so I think we're going to start seeing a lot of hardship coming up in the next couple of weeks, and September is, August, September is just around the corner. So I propose we continue this till November. That's my, that's my humble opinion. Gives us a leeway, gives us an idea what's coming, gives us a leeway if our agriculture workers are going to come over from across the border in the same numbers, we still don't know that. They're considered essential workers, but at the same time, we still have no vaccine for COVID. So yes, our numbers are increasing, I mean, decreasing, and we're seeing, finally seeing the plateau, I is finally seeing the light, but it can become dark and very quick, very fast. So I would, I would recommend, that would be my recommendation, that's my personal opinion, but it's up to council as a group to decide what we want to do. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, with your expertise as being in the medical field, I will follow your recommendations as you stated.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, if I may, sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to provide some other important facts that are happening, just before you guys make a decision, to make it a more informed decision. Since March, or prior to March, or normal disconnects, or number of accounts to be disconnected for non-payment was around or ranging the 100 accounts up to 150, just this, this past month, although we did not disconnect any services, we continue to run our reports and our processes, and we reach 400 accounts. Also, just for you to know, most of those, of those accounts are only passed to one month. We do have, we do have some, some of them, there are, the number of, or their balance is increasing with the months, but the majority of them continue to be only one month behind. We do have some accounts that are reaching 200, 300, 400, couple of them even passing the $1,000 balance on their account, but for those specific ones, we have contacted them via phone call and sent it some, some letters to, to see if we can work with the customer, which is a practice that we've been doing for some time now. We try to work with the customers, set them on a payment plan to avoid disconnection and fees. So that's all I wanted to include.
I know, thank you for that information, because it is important, that was going to be my next question, George, but at the same time, that just tells you the economic situation we're at right now, and so we can either start enforcing sooner, and I know it's difficult, but like you said, the vast majority of customers are a month behind. They're coping, they're trying to cope. they're trying to cope. And all we're adding is attempt two more months. And, and, and I think we definitely have to reach a point where we can't do this anymore. But I think because of right now, I think two months, two more months, it's, I think it's, it's adequate, especially in the hard times people are going through right now. Thank you, George. Matias?
Africa Luna Carrasco, I'm sorry. Mayor, I agree with your recommendation. I think we need to stay until November and then review the situation, but I agree.
Thank you, Africa. Matias, I'm sorry?
No comments, Mayor. Agree.
Thank you. Mario Wiccanon Junior?
Yes. How is this affecting your department?
Not specifically, specifically my department. So changes to my department was, we're not actually or physically disconnecting the services, or processes continue the same. We run our delinquencies, we send our, our reminding notices to customer, to customers when, when they're scheduled to, to be shut off or on a normal month, when, when they will be scheduled for a shut-off, we're now sending a letter explaining what's happening and, and why we're not disconnecting the service, but, and, and also giving them information on, on what their current bill is at. Other than not collecting the revenue and going into, into the utility enterprise funds that we have, is not affecting or, or doing any difference to our, to my department, other than not physically shutting off the service.
Yes, I understand the process, yeah. But the thing is, are these repeated customers? Is the same customers? I mean, we are helping, I mean, we are helping in general, right? I mean, we, we know that we're going through this pandemic, we opened this to help our residents. And I just, I'm just wondering why you brought it up. I mean, I don't know if it was affecting your department, or it's affecting the, the, the money that we receive, or what are we paying with that money? I mean, I just want to understand why it's on the ta, it's on the table and, and trying to get those delinquent fees back and, and have that people that you're saying, you mentioned that they're, they're behind one month. I don't know, I just want to know how it's affecting the community by, by, by doing this, helping them or not helping them.
Okay, council members?
That was one of my, my concerns.
Okay.
I see it here, I see it here, and I just wanted to, to learn if, if it's affecting my community because of doing this.
Okay, this is obviously help to the community, because they're not receiving late fees or, or getting a service disconnected for, for not paying a utility bill. And, and to your specific question, this is on the table, because it, it's, it's a resolution that was passed, passed back in April, given the, the situation of the coronavirus. And it's, it was set to expire September 1st. So, so I brought it up, because if, if we let it expire, then we're going to be supposed to disconnect services in September.
So if we don't bring that up, you'll be disconnecting services for?
According, according to the, the ordinances and, and city code, yes.
I don't know, Mayor, I, I just feel like, I don't know where, where, I'm short on words, but I don't know, we need to discuss this more, or just look at the outcome, or what's going to happen in the following month, or where do we stand? Yes, I understand that we need to go back to normal business, regular hours. No, I understand all those things. I know it's a fact, it's coming. But at this moment, I don't feel that it's needed to do so. But, I mean, they're still behind, people are behind, people have penalties, yes, they're going to pay for it. So I don't know if we should wait another month, two months, three months from now. And they're still responsible for their accounts. They got to pay that bill. Okay, so.
No, I, I, I understand what you're saying, and, and I know people have obligations, and they continue using the services. My biggest concern is, for example, just looking at the, for example, there was a freeze on student loans. And that, that helped, that has helped a lot of people. Interest was freeze, everything with the payment were freeze, and September is the magic month. A lot of mortgages companies, a lot of loan companies, I believe September is the magic number for them, a magic month for them. So if you're in hard times, September is going to be a really bad month for a lot of bankruptcies. September's going to be a lot of month of a lot of foreclosures. And I foresee, I would, I would rather not be part of that percentage and, and postpone it for another two months, because it doesn't affect us directly. Well, it does, because we're not collecting those fees. It'll, well, I understand, I mean, I mean, trust me, I am, I'm a true believer of paying for your services. You know, my biggest concern is, we're not, the jobs, for, for all, for all of us who are lucky to have a job, I think we're very fortunate. A lot of people got laid off, and they're not working. Now that the $600 assistance from the federal government has expired, now we're going to start seeing a lot more people in hardship. And that's what I'm looking about my community, our community. And the ag workers, the agriculture have been affected, services have been affected, restaurants have been affected. So that's why I am recommending that, but, but I do understand where you're coming from. And I thank you for that. Gloria Torres, comments, questions, or concerns? Gloria, you're in mute?
Mayor, I just agree with your recommendation.
Thank you.
Do you hear me? Do you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay.
Jose Ponce?
I agree with you.
Thank you. Jose Ponce?
Mayor, I agree with your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. It's, it's hard, it's always hard. And, and I believe I'm a true believer of, if you use the services, you have to pay. But I'm also looking at the hardship. And, and, and so, and it's affected all of us. So, so the consensus, we didn't take a vote, but the consensus was to proceed and look at the, actually, because we haven't voted on it. So I guess staff, George, look at it, and let's bring that topic. And I know it expires in September, so, so expedite it. And, and let's, let's further discuss it. But with the, with, with the acknowledgement that there's a possibility that it's going to be extended to November, pending approval from council. Okay?
Well, Mayor, we'll, we'll, we'll work on it and, and bring it up before you. Also, just, just for you to know, and, and know a little bit more of what we're doing, aside from those personal calls that we're making to, to those customers that are behind, we're also contacting outside agencies that, that we know that benefit or, or provide assistance to the community, see if they're, they're, they have any type of program at this time to assist them with their utility bill. So far, we contacted the Salvation Army, and they say that they're, they're helping customers with their utility bill. There's an application process they need, they need to go through, but we're going to be referring them to them. We have made some, some other calls, we haven't gotten answers yet to PEP, WECO, Chicanos por la Causa, and, and also Comité de Bienestar, we, we still need to, to reach to them. As I know, we, we have received some, some assistance to customers from them in the past.
Yeah. No, and, and the thing is, we also need to be very cautious that, that we would be shutting off people services in, in, in November and December, which is Thanksgiving. And, and also Christmas is just around the corner. So that's why it's very important that staff make contact with each individual who is backed up, and actually work on a plan with individual, like we've always done, like you mentioned. So it's hard enough, but this is going to be a very tough Christmas for a lot of us. So I just, the staff is just more work for you guys. Okay?
Mayor, can I, Mayor?
Please, please.
Yes, Mayor, we, Comité de Bienestar is helping that kind of, with that kind of problem, people that have behind bills, electricals, electricity, rent, and, and water. And the only thing is, they have had to be farm workers. But we have that help in Comité de Bienestar.
Yes, okay, good, very good. And something that we need to talk to different agencies, like Comité de Bienestar, Cabecinos y Fronteras, see how they're, how they're doing with it also. But thank you, George, appreciate it. You have a direction. And that was our last comment, last, last topic. Unless anyone has, well, there is no topic, because it's with not on the agenda. I will now motion to adjourn.
Mayor, well?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Is it possible that I can have a concern that I need to mention to you? Do I, can I do it on this work session, or no?
Is it, is it related to the item, to the shut-off of the water?
No, negative. It's just a concern of something else, that we have been behind on it. Yeah, but it's, it has to be with third party, yes. I mean, we're in a work session, we need to work on it.
I understand, but we got to stick to the agenda items. So if you'd like to have, we're going to have an extra work session this month. We were planning to just do the expansion of Cesar Chavez for the 19th. Or if you'd like to have, we can also put a discussion item on an action item meeting, if you'd like that.
So I cannot bring any concerns as a citizen, because we don't have a call to the public or as a council member, right? You're saying?
We have to stick to the agenda, so there isn't any call to the public or any open agenda item tonight. But we could, if it can, we do have an opening, we could still squeeze you in for next week or the 19th.
Not, not a suggestion, not, not anything like that, right?
I'm sorry, what, what did you say?
I just wanted to say, it's, it's, it's related to city employee, and I just wanted to commemorate the life of a city employee, and that was it. Can I bring it up or not?
Yes, you can.
Well, we're, we're working on it though.
Yes, I know you're working on it. But I wanted to bring it up, so we can start working harder and finish it, and finish it, and, and, and yes, it's about an employee that passed, his name, and the family for it, you know, for him, giving us so many years in the community, working hard for, for our community. So that was it.
Mario, Mario, we talked about the first responders, and, and, and I believe this person was a first responder also, because of where he worked. So it is part of the, it is part of the agenda, because we did talk about police, which was not, but they are first responders. So I am giving you that time right now. Okay?
Okay, so you're saying it's related to the substation?
Substation, and also. It's, he was, he was the first responder.
Yes, he was, yes, he was. And that was one of my comments, that I, I had a concern on it. I wanted to talk about it, I wanted to bring it up to you guys, if it was a good idea to commemorate the family for it, you know, bring his name.
Mario, you can comment, but we're not going to talk about it, pero sorry. This is your, your time to comment.
I understand, I understand. That's why I was asking. I don't want to get in trouble either, because when it comes to us, it's always a, there's always something that we need to protect ourselves. I understand that, okay, but, okay, whatever.
Mario, keep your comment.
I just wanted to bring it up to you guys, if it was, you know, okay to do this. And I wanted to commemorate the life of our fellow employee, you know, as an essential worker, Miguel González. And, and he was a chief operator from the wastewater division. I just wanted to bring that up to you guys, that if we can special thank the family for, you know, at least, you know, to show up some, you know, appreciation of him, you know, serving our community for 20 years, or 20 plus years, I'm sorry. And, you know, we just need to be on it, and, 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 and to be, just to be, give them special thanks, you know, like, and, and send someone of our staff, you know, a supervisor, Tadeo, someone going to their house and, 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 and give us our condolences to the family. I don't know if we've done so. But it just, it just came up to my mind to, to work on this.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor, I, I talked to Tadeo during the week, and, and I, I asked for the same thing like Mario's saying, because I, I look, and the face I look, Protección Civil Bomberos, they do something, something like mentioning that, 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 that they do it for, for one of the employees. And it is, it is, it is, have to be done. And he said that HRE, I was working on it. But, but it's already more than a week or two weeks that the, that person dies, and, and we not recognize man, a person that put a hard work on it.
Okay, okay. We're, 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 I will note those, I will, we cannot formally the platform, because it was not my item, it was not my item, but those will be heard. Okay? Okay, Kay?
I, yes, it, it sounds like something very appropriate for a presentation at, and we also need to take into account the, the surviving family and, and, and respect their wishes and find out what their wishes are.
Exactly. Okay, thank you. So noted, por favor. Thank you for those comments. And at this point in time, I will now motion to adjourn.
So move.
There's a second? There's a motion, there's a second? All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 All of us again? Motion carries. Happy good night, guys. Thank you so much, and stay safe, please.